All right, I'd like to call to order the April 20th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the Redevelopments Accessor Agency, and the Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with a Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Planning Commissioner Andrew Sternfels.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of exposure to litigation and one item of existing litigation, C.C. Myers versus the City of West Sacramento, and no action was taken. So with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, items that are presented under 1A, the council cannot discuss them or take action on those issues, but this is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to testify under Item 1A or any of the other agenda items this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn the card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all of the comments be limited to no more than three minutes each. And then also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the council questions and the public testimony have begun, we don't take additional speaking cards, so if you're here about a specific item and you know already that you want to talk about it, you know, if you can get your card in as soon as possible, that would be great, but certainly before the conclusion of the staff report. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public and on television, and this week we are microphoned, can cause anxiety and hives and other bad symptoms, and so we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or actually not even applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a relatively civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under Item 1A. The first is by Pardeep Narayan. I hope he, and Pardeep will be followed by Donna Springer, just because you're not getting ready. Are you coming together?
We're coming this group.
All right.
Do you want to go first? You want me to go first? Okay, I'll leave you with pictures to do. Mayor and council, my name's Donna Springer. I co-own a delivery service in West Sacramento. I have a lady business partner. We have been in business in West Sacramento for 31 years. We have been on Sutter Avenue for 25 of those 31 years. Last week, I was here to show you pictures of the decay of Sutter Avenue. Nothing's changed in the last week, or since April 6th. It is still in decay. I can tell you that prior to our encounter with Phil Wright, one of the assistant city planners, we have called for years, for years, and been treated so rudely trying to explain the condition of Sutter. We've called engineering, we have called planning, I mean, we have called everybody because we kept thinking we were treated so rudely, we're not calling the right guys. But Mr. Wright listened to us, did homework on it. We did have the director of Public Works call and say that the plan going forward is to fill in the holes and not replace the street. I'm telling you, you can fill in a hole, and I'm going to bet you a bubble gum and two cents that you're going to be back filling that hole in a very short amount of time. These holes are huge. So I'm saying, I appreciate the follow-through of Mr. Wright, I appreciate the director of Public Works calling me, and I'm thankful, but I don't think you have a sustainable plan. Well, Mr. Naranja owns a trucking company on Sutter Avenue, and he is here because obviously we're delivery guys, both of us, and we're just beside ourselves with our equipment going up and down the street. So thank you, Mr. Naranja, for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. All right, those are our only requests under Item 1A, so we'll proceed to Item 1B in just a moment. Well, no, because we did have this presentation before, and I know that both the directors and the city manager has been exploring this issue directly as well. We, I think particularly as the city becomes, you don't need a stand, but particularly as the, as the city has come out of the recession and also as we've been building quite a bit in terms of some of our infrastructure, it, sometimes, we often get questions, well, why, why is this, you know, park not being renovated, or why is this road not being fixed or some other improvement? And we remain actually still fiscally quite constrained in the city. I think the report from about the total balance of our road fund was in the, in the order of $100,000 for the entire city in all of its, all of its roads and sidewalks. And a replacement of Sutter is, just as an example, that is a half a million dollar project to fully replace the road and bring it up to, bring it up to stuff. And we have a lot of, through our pavement management system, we inventory all of the roads in the city on a, in a real-time, ongoing basis to see what, where are the biggest problems and where are the opportunities for, for repair. So we don't, we actually don't have enough money in the road fund even to, even if Sutter was the only road in the city to do the necessary repairs. We know, we're, I think, we knew already, but definitely the case has been made very strongly in these last two, these last two meetings about, about the facility, but we are, we have, we're trying to figure out the whole strategy for roads and for other infrastructure in the city as we, as we deal with this issue. Many of our larger projects in the city, which sometimes cause even us to think, hey, we have more money than we thought, and maybe we start fixing other things, many of them, most of them are funded by grants. And so we get money, we build a new bridge because somebody gave us money to build a new bridge, and we put a little of our, we put five bucks into it ourselves, but mostly we get a federal grant or a state grant. It doesn't mean we had $10 million we could have spent on something else. And this is the, this is our challenge as a city government in terms of keeping up with infrastructure, because the way that you funded infrastructure up until the late '70s through property taxes just is no longer viable. And so we're aware of it, we are definitely looking for solutions on roads and other parts of our infrastructure, but we don't have the discretionary general fund resources to be able to tackle, you know, even most of the, even most of the needs in the city at any, at any one time. So we're on it, we appreciate you keep raising it, and, and, and I know our department directors and the city manager are paying a lot of attention to it, but I also can't guarantee that, you know, at the next meeting that the, that the city manager will say, hey, while you were, while you guys were gone for two weeks, we, we fixed Sutter, because I don't want to create an unrealistic expectation about the capacity of the city either. All right, so Item 1B is council communications and reports. Are there any this evening? Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, I got to go back to the date, on the 11th, we have a meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District, and the big item, in addition to getting updates on some of the projects around Yolo County and the Transit District, the big item that was brought in for a workshop and to consider were proposed fare changes within the district. Obviously, in the past, this past, earlier in the year, Sacramento Regional Transit had increased fares on their bus routes, which impacts our routes because of the exchange areas and folks that get the ferry, the fare share agreements that were in place. In addition, we are looking at ridership changes, so we, we're, the district is starting to look at fare changes. I believe it'll be on the next meeting in May, I don't have a date in front of me, that we will be, May 9th is when it'll be back in front of the district. So for those who take the bus and transit districts, be aware that there is a slight increase over the next three years is being proposed, and if you have any feedback, welcome it through the city website. You can find my webs, my email address. If you have comments or questions, I'd be happy to take it and consider that as we go towards that meeting in May. On, secondarily, on this past Monday, I am really lost on my dates, 18th, we had a meeting of the Yolo County Conservancy, which is the Habitat Plan. We had a big, long discussion in that, and we are kind of clearing the final hurdle on that plan and going to the EIR/IS phase of it. There's, as you recall, a lot of coordination between the state, federal agencies on this. All continues to go well. The Conservancy is now starting to adapt to its role as a budgeting agency, and with that comes preparing for the functions that are in that agency, which are around, in addition to getting the plan done, are actually procuring easements, working with landowners, actually monitoring lands. So a robust conversation is starting to occur around the infrastructure that will be necessary, staffing, and costs. So we will be having that conversation through the budgeting season. I know our city manager has been engaged in those conversations as well. I'll keep the council updated, but I think it's the goal of everyone at this agency, where you kind of learned our lessons around the role of JPAs and how they can quickly get out of control of, at least beyond what the councils and the member jurisdictions had in mind. So we're all mindful of that, and it wasn't too long ago we were dealing with some financial issues at that agency. And we're also looking through the post-recession era where we had to learn the phrase shared services much more, and that will be part of the lexicon as we go into that. So it was a very good discussion, and also as part of our kicking off of the 2015, 2016, 2017 budget start. So again, the plan is on track. There will be a slight delay at the end of the year. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service asked for just a one-month reprieve as they are dealing with some staffing issues, but we should be on track to kind of, by the end of the year, have some final reviews done and going into 2017, late 2017 permitting looking like it's going to happen. So, anyway, there you go.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, a couple to report on. West Sac-Safka met last month, and we received an update on the GRR. That's a general evaluation report, and that is extremely important for us because it is the first step to receive monies from the federal government, which is called a WERDA. And we've had people back in Washington, D.C. this last, two weeks ago with cap to cap, that have met with a number of people, and keep your fingers crossed, because everything really sounds pretty good to be on this upcoming WERDA, and that, what that entails is then that is federal monies come into our project. We've spent monies on engineering and other kinds of things, and we get reimbursed so that we can continue to build the levy that is necessary for a minimum of 200-year flood We are in the process of acquiring properties for a setback levy or for levy improvements, and we are still negotiating with property owners because, you know, it's their property, and we have to buy it from them. We don't get to go in and take it or anything like that. So, anyway, but things are proceeding, and they're going along okay. So we're looking forward to getting that property under our jurisdiction so that we can go ahead and start this levy project. The problem that we have is if we don't get started and get moving on it, FEMA has the opportunity to step in, and of course FEMA would probably raise our rates for flood insurance, and we do not want that to happen. We pay enough in flood insurance already, we don't need to have all that happen because people would stop paying, and then businesses wouldn't continue to pay, and it's just a snowball effect that everything really slows down for our city. So we want to continue to move forward with that. Our second meeting that I had was with Regional Sand. There is a dispute, you might have read about it in the paper, there's a dispute on a $500 million bid for the major project that Regional Sand is going through, and that's called Echo Project. And we got halfway through the arguments and discussion, and we had to adjourn. Other council members, other supervisors, and other electeds all had someplace else to go, and so we got halfway through it, and so we are going to resume that, that discussion on the 27th. And so you'll probably see some things in the paper where one company, A, is suing company B because they, they really didn't follow the rules or, and then Regional Sand chose a company that followed the letter of the law, but at the same time, there are some issues with that particular company. So it's a little convoluted, but at the same time, I think Regional Sand is going to get through this, and we're going to move forward with this Echo Project. So, because it is extremely important that we do, matter of fact, the federal government said we have to do it, and since we have to, we have to, and we don't get any money from the feds, but that's another story. So, anyway, stay tuned. I will give as many updates as I possibly can as far as, is how all this is going to work out or shake out. I do think that we will get our project done ahead of time and under budget, so look forward to going to that meeting.
Yeah, sounds like it. I mean, this is, I mean, these two issues are, are good examples of our infrastructure challenge that we talked about earlier, and just to, just to reemphasize the point. After her, Katrina, when the assessment said we needed to spend a half a billion dollars on our levies just in West Sacramento, and then our, our share of the, of the project for the sanitation issues with respect to some of the pollutants in the Delta and what have you, these are massive things. A half a billion dollars in a town of 50,000 people is a, an enormous amount of money, and so we have had to divert resources that we might have otherwise put into infrastructure that's above ground that we all see and could enjoy in order to be able to just make sure that we're meeting the standards and staying safe and protecting life and property. So once that's done in 20 years, maybe we'll be rich, but we do, we definitely need to take care of our life safety issues. Mayor Protam Sandin, had a big, big two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, the, for West SAC Executive Board met, and we received a review of the revenues and expenditures for the past two years, and learned that the city council will be receiving more details and have an opportunity to provide direction on, at an upcoming meeting, both on the program and budget. We also received a brief update on the potential countywide tax initiative that may provide funding for preschools, and a firm, FM3, is pulling right now to provide background to the Board of Supervisors about that. And last week, I participated in Metro Chambers, Mr. Kristoff mentioned, was last week, and along with Greg Faben, John Robinson, and also Tom Ramos of Wasafka. And between us, we covered flood protection, again, as Mr. Kristoff mentioned, transportation, economic development, and civic amenities, and I had an opportunity to speak about our riverfront development and plans, and I want to thank Erin Laurel on our staff for assistance preparing me. I was, and I'm happy to share with you all materials from the program if that would be helpful. Also, Mike Lukin from Yolo County Transportation District was also in D.C. representing the transportation infrastructure needs. And Mr. Mayor, County Supervisor Viegas, also on the program, asked me to present you with a delegation photograph.
And I didn't bring anything for him, I feel bad.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protam Sandin. I had just two quick reports, one of them very strange, and one not, so the not one is yesterday, the statewide livable communities team for AARP met, and as the council knows, West Sacramento and San Francisco are the two California cities in AARP's National Network of Age-Friendly Cities. We're also, as a, as a part of that, part of the World Health Organization's Global Network of Age-Friendly Cities. We do expect a couple of additional cities in California to join this year, including one that's bigger than us and, bigger than San Francisco. And so we had a significant discussion and debate about the role that accessory dwelling units can play in meeting the needs of seniors, but also in what the appropriate approach to get there might be, and whether or not state legislation, and particularly very prescriptive state legislation, is the best route or not. And then a long, a long presentation and discussion around Vision Zero, the effort in Los Angeles and San Francisco and several other cities to buy, date certain in the next decade to get to a point where there are zero fatalities from, from traffic collisions in those cities. It sounds like a ridiculous goal, and, and in some ways it is, but the, the very sophisticated analytics and data that are being brought to bear on, on the challenges of collisions, I thought was extraordinarily impressive. So I've asked them, the L.A. team, if they would be willing to produce a webinar for, for other cities in, in the network, in the age-friendly network, on how, how we might use the data sources that we already have and some of the analytical tools that they're building out of L.A. and Vision Zero to be able to, to make smart decisions that are rooted in the data and evidence that would, that have the potential at the lowest cost to be able to dramatically reduce the number of fatalities, and fatalities particularly for the most vulnerable populations in our, in our community. So it was a, it was a good session. And also that the statewide team received word that the West Sacramento survey of, of older adults in our community has been completed, and we've seen a draft of it, and that's going to be shared with the council, and then with the team that, Councilmember Johanneson and Mayor Protam Sandin will be co-chairing, along with representatives of each of the commissions, to begin, to, to use that survey to begin the work on the livable community, age-friendly work here in our own city. So the other jurisdictions, we're, we're very excited about that, and lots of offers for technical assistance from universities and researchers and other organizations around the country for our work as you get underway. The strange one was, I was asked last week at the, sort of at the last second, to be part of a delegation of five mayors from the U.S. to the country of Qatar in the Persian Gulf on the border of Saudi Arabia, right across the water from Iran, to build some trade relationships, also to deal with some diplomatic issues between the two countries, but really focused mainly on trade and investment. We, we don't do a lot of business with Qatar, as far as I'm aware. We have, our port has shipped rice to Turkey, we have had a presence in the region, and, and Qatar in particular is a country of, it's about the country of the size physically and population-wise of the, of the Saqag region here in Sacramento, but with very little food. So it's a highly food insecure place, and so the potential, at least, for some food trade relationships between their country and our region and our city and port is there, so partly exploring that. Qatar has also shifted its own investment strategy. It's, it's a very wealthy country, from natural gas in particular, and they are about to launch a $35 billion investment strategy in the U.S. They're pivoting to the U.S., the U.S. is being seen as a, as a strong market for them for, in terms of investments, and looking at infrastructure and real estate and a variety of other areas. So we met with their, the CEO of their investment authority about potential directions that they might take here in the U.S. in cities like ours, and also with Qatar Airways, who's one of the major carriers in the world today, looking at some potential unorthodox reshuffling of the deck in the American airline market with potential partnerships between airlines like Qatar Airways and regional carriers in the U.S., sort of cutting, cutting out the, some of the anti-competitive issues that have emerged because of the mergers between the big airlines here in the United States. So, so it was fascinating trip, not spent as much time in a country quite like that ever before, but some, some, I think, some productive openings and partnerships for, for us. Qatar, incidentally, is also going to be the host of the World Cup in 2022, huge amount of controversy around every dimension and aspect of that. We did also spend a lot of time meeting with the Supreme Committee for the Delivery of the Legacy of the Country or something like that, which is just the World Cup 22, 2022 Committee. So other issues came, emerged as well, but I thought it was a productive trade mission. All right, so Item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions, and I think we're reappointing Mr. Ledesma to the Port Commission this evening. So I'd like to, of course, Mr. Ledesma to the commission, ask if there's a motion to confirm the appointment.
One moment.
It's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mr. Johanneson. Seeing no debate, is all those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed, turning down that motion carries. We are in recruitment right now for the Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Commission. We're calling that the, the focus of our recruitment this time is a bit unique, and that we're looking for a resident of our community who is in the AARP age range. We're not checking IDs, but is in the AARP age range, and that would, would like to work specifically on the commission and in this joint task force led by Mr. Johanneson and Mayor Protam Sandin on age-friendly community, livable community, policy implementation in, in, as a citizen participant, and, and so we're particularly recruiting in that scope. So certainly members of the public who are here or on television or members of the council are helping to recruit. That's the, that's the lane that we're in in terms of the, the remaining vacancy for that commission, and I'm hoping to be able to bring it, an appointment next month. All right, that brings us to Item 2, which is presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 3rd, 2016, as the Big Day of Giving here in West Sacramento. And I'd like to turn it over first to Mayor Protam Sandin, who's been one of the preeminent regional leaders in the development of the Big Day of Giving concept, in its wildly successful first year of implementation last year, and continues to be, as she is one of the region's, you know, top philanthropic leaders and visionaries, major force behind that program, to introduce the item.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, in my, my day job, I serve as Executive Director of the Yolo Community Foundation. So the Big Day of Giving actually is organized between the SAC region community, Sacramento Region Community Foundation, the Yolo Community Foundation, and Placer Community Foundation. And this, this day, this is the third year where it's been broad, broadly kind of organized across all areas of nonprofits. We started four years ago, actually, just focusing on the arts, but last, this year, on May 3rd, from midnight to 11:59 PM, we're, we're hoping to raise $6 million from 30,000 donors in the region. 570 nonprofits have gone through a rigorous qualification process. There are actually 70 in Yolo County, 33 have West Sacramento ties, and 10 actually have West Sacramento addresses. So there's a huge impact with this generosity, not only in the region, but also directly to our city. And tonight, we actually have a few nonprofits with us that can talk about their, their plans for the, the program.
All right, so I'm going to, is that a motion?
I moved the proclamation.
All right, so moved by Mayor Protam Sandin and seconded by Mr. Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed, turning down that motion carries. Do you want to bring them forward?
Sure. Do you want to present it?
We can both go.
Okay. Go. I don't want to ruin the microphone system that now is back working. We have representatives tonight from the West Sacramento Dolphins Swim Team, Tessa Simkowitz, Simkowitz, sorry. So Zimkowitz. And we have folks from the West Sacramento Friends of the Library and also River City Rowing Club. If you'd like to say a few words about your program.
Sure.
Yeah, all right. So my name is Tessa Shimkevich, and I'm a board member for the West Sacramento Swim Team. We have been around since 1989, and we have provided services for over 3,000 children in the community from ages four to 18, and we organize, I'm trying to paraphrase because she said not to read too much, but, so we're dedicated to teaching children to swim competitively while still instilling the values of dedication and hard work and team spirit. We, the discipline and practice during the week and a positive competition during the weekends give our kids the extra boost of confidence they need in today's world. Many of our swimmers go on to be lifeguards at the rec center and swim for River City High School and even college. Our coaching staff is also an integral part of our team's and children's success. Most of our coaches have a very rich and diverse background in the sport of swimming and a deep passion for the sport. They provide the team a proper instruction and training to swim against our teams in main conferences as well as conferences in the Northern California Swim League. Our team is not only fueled by the energy of our kids swimming, but the support of our coaches. our coaches is supplemented by the passion of our parent volunteers, like me. They come out during the weekends to set up and manage and run meets, as well as clean up afterwards. Imagine building a small tent city on a pool deck on a Friday night, just to take it down Saturday afternoon. We have a strong volunteer parent board that spends a lot of time organizing things behind the scenes year-round. The reward is for all of us in seeing the swimmers complete their event and sometimes beat their times. Just like the city of West Sacramento, the West Sacramento Dolphin Swim Team is growing, and we plan to be a part of the community for years to come. Although we work in cooperation with the city of West Sacramento, we are not fully funded by them, and fundraising is an integral part of the recreational sports experience. Donations to the swim team provide the children of our city and surrounding areas an opportunity to experience recreational age group swimming in a semi-competitive setting. We thank you for your support and your kind generosity and gracious consideration for the Big Day of Giving.
And Helen McDonald from the West Sacramento Friends of the Library, and her big dog, or little dog.
Hi, I am Helen McDonald, and I am the new president of the Friends of the Library. This little fellow thinks he's the big dog. However, I reminded him I'm taller than he is, so he has to wait his turn. With the Friends of the Library, we serve approximately 15,000 to 18,000 patrons a month, and with those patrons, there's a variety of ethnicities and ages and needs and wants. We, as the Friends, significant portion of what we do in terms of our fundraising is to help provide programming. It's one of the things that the library's budget doesn't always allow for. We have gone last year, we, the programs that were in place last February were 47 programs. This year in February, we had 107 programs. And as you might imagine, that takes more money, and we anticipate, as everything, it will continue to rise. We would like to continue to provide these programs and others, along with the thing, we also provide books and other materials for our homework center and so forth. I could go on and on, because I'm very enthusiastic, but I know that's not the point. We would like your support, and part our other goal, because they did ask us when we first talked about participating this year for the first time, they asked us to set goals, and one, of course, was funding. The other was to raise awareness about our library, because several board members have had people come into the library and say, oh, I didn't know you had a library in West Sacramento. So part of our social media strategy was to tackle both of those. And because Big Day of Giving is, has an AKA of big dog, we decided that Turner, from the Arthur F. Turner Library, would go around West Sacramento looking for this big dog before May 3 to find him. And we're using social media, and he's being photographed in different parts of the city so that people that are on social media can get a double whammy, seeing different parts of the city, highlighting that, and also doing our ask for support. So we would certainly love you to follow us on Twitter and Facebook, and if your billfold is available, we would certainly appreciate a donation to our library so that we can keep it as vibrant as it has been. And we also want to thank Mayor and Council for all the support you've given us over the years. It's a fabulous library. If you haven't been there and spent time there, please do come. We think it's great, pardon?
12, 12.
Oh, 12, 12 Merkley Avenue, yes, the Vice President is speaking. And we will be there all day. It is a 24-hour fundraiser, it is all online with credit cards, so we will be at the library open all day with stations. If you, any of the public want to come in that day and use their credit card, we'll have a dedicated computer there. Also, if folks, and we realize that the minimum donation is $25, we realize for some folks that can be a lot, so we will also take any kind of donation that would help us moving forward to serve our folks. Thank you very much.
And the Executive Director of River City Rowing Club, Tricia, is it Buckner?
Buckner.
Thank you.
Hi. So if you're unfamiliar with our club, we started back in 1983. A group of adults wanted to take advantage of the great water we have out at the Port of Sacramento, also the water most recently where all the goats are, which has been really exciting. In 1995, we started a juniors program, which, to help serve the youth in the area. Now we have over 300 active members, age ranges from nine up to, I think our oldest member is close, getting close to 90. Our motto is Row for Life, and for a lot of people, it means a lot of different things. For some, it's purely just sport, others, it's, for some of the kids, it's been a life-changing part of their life, and for some adults, it's been life-changing in terms of health. So we really stick to that motto and love it. We're especially proud of the junior program. They have qualified boats to nationals the past seven years, and every year, we're sending more and more seniors off to college. They're getting recruited to row in college, and many of them on scholarship. It can be an expensive sport to be a part of, and a rowing boat that holds just eight people can cost over $40,000. So a lot of our fundraising goes towards purchasing new equipment, and also, we aim to make it affordable for everybody, so we have a large scholarship fund, so we use our fundraising money for that, too. So our Big Day of Giving funds go towards new boats, and also a large contribution towards that scholarship fund. We participated last year in the Big Day of Giving, it was very exciting to see the community rally behind everyone, not just our nonprofit, but all the nonprofits in Sacramento and Yolo County, and it was a great experience, and I'm thrilled just to be a part of that day again, and also see how much more awareness we can get for our club. Thank you.
And Helen reminded me, too, it's wwwbigdayofgiving.org is that day, is where you make your donation. We also, we've also been challenged by our supervisor, Oscar Vegas, as a city challenge to support the elderly nutrition program. Last year, the West Sacramento, West Sacramento City Council actually participated the most, and so I think he's throwing out the gauntlet and wanting to challenge folks. So that'll start to happen the next couple of weeks, you'll see more and more of those kind of challenges out there. But I want to, I'd like, on behalf of my colleagues on the council, thank all of the representatives here this evening, and wish you the best in fundraising. Thank you.
I'll just make a quick comment, as the mayor and Mayor Protam head back to the dais. I'd urge everyone to go to the website and look at the site. Last year, I think I was traveling at the moment of the Big Day of Giving, but that didn't stop me, I was able to use the credit card, get online, and contribute. It's a great way to bring awareness to these charities. I'd also urge you to look at the staff report, where many of the Yolo County and West Sacramento charities are listed, some of your favorites might be in there, some of them, you can make some of your favorites. So again, I urge everybody, it's a really convenient way to get back to the community. So thank you, Mayor Protam Sandin, for leading this. Yeah, it's so true, at the, I don't know if I'm the only one in the world, but I sometimes think, well, wouldn't it be fun to be, what if I had my own foundation? What if I won the lottery, I'd put all the money into a foundation, I would just give it out to things, but of course, I haven't won the lottery. But even if, you know, with this, even if you are just prepared to spend a little bit of money on philanthropy, this is such a great, a great tool, and you know, and it's easy, the system works easy, you learn about organizations you wouldn't have learned about before, and you're, you know, you're managing your portfolio of your giving, and you don't have to, nobody's going to, there's nobody on the phone on the other side, hey, well, oh, thanks for your 25, could I get you to go to 50, right? It's not a hard sell, and you get to really support a lot of organizations that don't, they don't have a development director, you know, the Dolphins don't have a full-time grant writer on board, and so these kind of organizations really, really benefit from exactly the kind of community-based giving that the Big Day of Giving can enable. So it's worth even, worth checking out, even if you haven't, if you haven't yet, have not yet found the thing that you want to donate to, there's so many great options on that list. Thanks so much for your leadership. All right, with that, then, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items three through 11. Any items unconscioned, any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment? Item eight, please. Oh, okay. Item eight, okay. Any other ones? All right, we have requests to speak on four, five, and six. So we'll go first to item four, which is Consideration of Appropriation of Measure V Funds for the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency Flood Improvement Projects in an Amount Not to Exceed 4.5 Million. Tom Ramus? Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor Eric Baldwin, members of the council. My name is Tom Ramus, I'm here today, tonight, in my capacity as a Director of the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, which Council Kristoff is a fellow member. And in light of the agenda tonight concerning flood protection items, I thought it would be appropriate to come by and make a few comments, and from my and the agency's perspective, specifically, though, to thank the council, the city management, and the staff for working with WSAFCA to help develop and fund our financing plan for the upcoming Southport Levy Improvement Project. The plan, as, item four, is a transfer of $4.5 million of Measure V funds to the project, and it will allow WSAFCA to move forward with the project as scheduled. And I know there was a lot of work to be done concerning when the bonding capacity would be done for the overall use of the funds, and by freeing up these monies now, it's going to help us keep on schedule, and like Councilman Kristoff said earlier, it's very important we stay on that schedule. As you know, the project's been many years in the making, with our partners at the state, the Corps of Engineers, our extensive team of experienced consultants, and the community at large. And now we're posed to begin construction of an amazing project, if you can call a levy project amazing, but it'll address many of our greatest flood deficiencies. It is what I call the setback levy, which mitigates its environmental impacts on-site, which is a unique feature, and it will provide compatible recreational opportunities in the future. All this is being accomplished while maximizing the benefits derived from our local contributions and minimizing the impacts of private property as much as possible. But our work is not done. The funding needs for the Southport Project and the future West Sacramento Levy Improvement Project as a whole will continue to evolve. We need to remain flexible and look for ways to stretch our dollars. I was also happy to see, in your staff report, the mention of future use of flood control in Lufy's if needed. I think this is an important element for our funding, both from a fiscal reason, but also as it relates to the residents and business owners of West Sacramento. We have long stated that as a community, we have stepped up three times to fund our flood protection needs, assessment, in-lu, and part of the Measure V sales tax. It is prudent we continue to stay true to those words. We have a ways to go to achieve our 200-year flood protection, and even with the best planning, project scopes change, costs change, and there could be a need to go to the residents again in the future. You only have to look across the river at SAFCA's new assessment initiatives for evidence of that.
Tom, I got to ask you to wrap up.
I'm done.
Okay.
We need to remain true to the good stewards of our flood protection monies.
Wait a second. You're just trying to pull one over on me.
One sentence, one sentence. So with that, thank you for your support, we look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Tom. Just on this item, thanks very much, Tom, for your comments and all the work that's gone into this. With respect to the in-lu fees, because I know there's been some, I hope the board members of WSAFCA and your attorney have, are paying attention to this item in particular. This, because this is an example of how we are dealing with the funding of flood protection, which is, we are taking money out of a fund that we had, that's been programmed for the streetcar. If we had followed just strictly the funding plan that we had said we were going to do with respect to Measure V, we wouldn't have this, the funds to transfer from streetcar to flood. It's our ability to make these kinds of in-the-moment, on-the-fly, in-real-time allocations to where the priorities are, that have allowed us to have progress on parks, roads, streetcar, and flood protection, and a variety of other initiatives all at the same time. And so I would simply, you know, it is that flexibility, and it is not treating funds as owned, especially when they're not owned by any particular agency or entity, but it's part of an overall picture. If we had, if we didn't take that approach with respect to in-lu fees and here with Measure V, we wouldn't be able to accomplish these objectives. And so it really is, it's critical that we continue to be able to be nimble in the way that we allocate our, the fundings, the funds that we do have, to go where they're needed at the moment where the opportunity is. And so as, you know, I'm one of the biggest streetcar advocates, although I have practically entire councils on the streetcar committee, I think we're all supportive of doing this, because it's the right opportunity and the right moment in order to advance the flood project, and we can wait on the streetcar dollars. But it is that willingness to be flexible and to be nimble among all the partners that we work with that makes West Sacramento, you know, unusually successful at actually getting things done. So, so thanks for being here, and I know there's been this question, but I think it's an important reminder about how we're getting, how we're getting the job done on the flood plan. So we have item five also, Tom, does you want to talk on item five as well?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay, thanks. All right, okay, item six, then, is Consideration of Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance 16-3, approving amendments to Title 17 of the Municipal Code and Ordinance 16-4, approving a development agreement at 3121 Evergreen Avenue. We have a couple of requests to speak on the item. The first is by Everett Reddington.
Hello, good afternoon. I am Everett Reddington, I am a resident here in West Sacramento, and on this issue, I don't understand a couple of things. There was, there's no stakeholder meetings. There were no stakeholder meetings, and the first meeting wasn't clarifying exactly what you were rezoning and what for. And, you know, that's a big concern and everything, but I'm a citizen here in West Sacramento, and I'm a patient of medical cannabis. And I have a great need for it, to where I would like to have my right restored to grow in my backyard, outdoor, in 100 square foot. I don't believe that's too much to ask, especially since you guys can rush things through like this, for, you know, tons of marijuana to be in one spot. You know, possibility of tons of marijuana to be in one spot, and you've banned my outdoor grow of 100 square feet, and you got, what, 17,000 square feet that you guys just gave up on and made changes for, without, what do they call them, stakeholder meeting? I don't know. Give me some answers on if it'd be easy for you to be flexible and just lift the ban for outdoor grow, make sure that, you know, everyone knows it's 100 square foot, I'm sure we'll all comply, you know? Thanks again.
Thank you. Luke Bruner?
Mayor, honorable council members, my name is Luke Bruner. I'll try to be brief today. Over the last several years, I've been able to be involved in a lot of interesting cannabis policy. In 2015, I served as the Legislative Chairperson for the California Cannabis Industry Association when they went through the MRSA process. In Humboldt County, I was the co-founder of California Cannabis Voice Humboldt, a grassroots organization that gave rise to a comprehensive set of ordinances within Humboldt County, and then have been engaged in other places and jurisdictions around the county on municipal matters. I wanted to speak highly in favor of this project. I think the process, in my review of it, has gone very well and serves as an excellent and healthy model of how these things go about. This is an issue that can be a very emotionally charged issue, but sobriety and clear thinking on it really goes a long way. Things aren't necessarily precedent-setting, things don't have to be sweeping, and I think your careful and ongoing analysis has given rise to an excellent outcome. I encourage and support your unanimous passage. Thank you.
Lynette Davies?
Hello, I'm Lynette Davies. I've been here before on a lot of our cannabis issues, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about this, because this really concerns me. By the way, I do favor an ordinance adding distribution centers into the city policy. I think that's a smart move. However, the Brown Act actually, to me, was even viable. However, the Brown Act actually, to me, was even violated because last time on April 6th, nowhere on it did it say cannabis, didn't say marijuana. It was literally blank into that, so there was nothing there. So I did take a look on the Planning Commission side, is where we picked it up. I got a call from a patient who mentioned it at that particular time. But my problem with this whole project is that you have a 17,000-square-foot project that's going in, and it looks like it's being a special ordinance change for one particular business, where we have not had a fair policy that they come through and have bids. Where's the open bidding for a distribution center here in the city of Sacramento, West Sacramento? It's not even there. But when you take a look at what you've got in your agenda, you have a team that actually made MRSA, set it up, helped with it, according to this operations on here, and it's part of the Southern Wine and Spirits of Florida. Of Florida, this is where these people have been working. They work directly at the state Capitol, helping make the bill, helping make this put in. And then on top of it, we have Tim Moreland from apparently on the April 6th, which is a state employee coming forward at the same time, working for the Board of Equalization for Fiona May, speaking on this. When we haven't even set up the policies, we haven't set up a policy, we haven't set up a permit, there's nothing even done on the statewide level of this, and will other distribution centers ever have the opportunity to open in here? But what really concerned me was what's on Page 28 on your agenda, when you come down to the money that's going to be given to the city of West Sacramento on a quarterly basis of 2.5 percent of all the sales. Is there any other industry that pays you 2.5 percent of their sales? Do the gas stations down the street give you 2.5 percent sales? Does the grocery store? Does the drugstore? And yet, we have an ordinance that is being made for a specific company without equal input that the city is going to accept. To me, that appears to be between bribery or extortion. This is wrong. I support having a distribution center, but I think that the city of West Sacramento should pull what you have, you should put your ordinance into effect, and you should draw bids from the citizens of the state to see if they would like to operate in the city. That you should not be creating ordinance for a specific company for the wine and liquor industry that actually lobbied. Even your last speaker, but it was the first thing you said, "I lobbied to make the bill." Where are the citizens in this? Where is the involvement? I think this absolutely reeks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think there's probably some misunderstanding about what is up before us tonight. So this is not a sole... The ordinance applies to industrial areas in the city under certain restrictions, but it's open to all. The proposed ordinance, if anyone else proposes to open such a facility, have to get the property and fulfill all the standards, get a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. But the ordinance sets the rules for how that would work. The development agreement goes along with it, but the ordinance is universal in its application. We don't own... Lynette, that's not how this chamber... It may work that way back home, it doesn't work that way here. We don't have back and forth. But the ordinance is about setting the rules of the game that are then available and applicable to everyone, and anyone else that wishes to acquire the property can proceed it. We don't own this property, so we can't bid it out, and there's not a single license being issued for this purpose that we would then issue a competitive bid for because it's open. In the same way that all of our other light industrial uses, if you propose to manufacture, package, and distribute really any product in the city, whether that's rice, whether that's pharmaceutical products, whether that's anything, because we are the region's primary hub for logistics, distribution, and manufacturing, you have to comply with the standards that are similar to this. In this particular case, we require a conditional use permit, which is not the norm, but it's also not... But it's far from being unique. When there are particular uses of various kinds, particularly an untested one like this, we often require a conditional use permit to make sure that it's appropriate for the specific conditions, and then that's reviewed by the citizens who comprise the city's Planning Commission. This is not a rezoning, this is the clarification and the addition of a new zoning category, which was not possible to do before. We've been working on the issue of marijuana, medical marijuana here at the council for, I want to say, five or six years. We were one of the first city governments in the region to try to tackle the issue to figure out how to deal with marijuana, medical marijuana, dispensing, distribution, growing, following that. And the rules at the state level and the conflicts at the federal level were so severe that in many cases, we simply could not find a solution that would satisfy the ambiguous rules. The legislature this year, this past year enacted finally a relatively clear legal framework that made it possible, where we could not have adopted an ordinance at all in this arena a year ago, the legislature's action made it possible for us to regulate this usage in a way that was consistent with our other responsibilities. The legislature did not solve all the ambiguities, and so some of the federal issues that preclude us from using our normal taxing and business license mechanisms with these kinds of companies do not exist, which is the reason for the 2.5 percent fee. It is in lieu of what we might have otherwise used as a taxing measure. But the legislation does, for the most part, resolve many of the key issues that precluded us. And in fact, during the debates that the council had about growing and about dispensing, that was the number-one issue that we had raised. Legislature, please give us some clarity and some immunity from some of the legal problems so that we can make this, you know, a workable sector of the economy that will serve the need of patients in a way that's safe and that doesn't impact their neighbors. And so that's what the legislature largely did, and this ordinance follows that. It's distinct from the outgoing issue. There are many sectors in which we permit logistics, manufacturing, production, packaging, and distribution, where we don't allow, you know, production in a neighborhood. So we have, you know, an ammonium phosphate plant in the city that produces that. We don't allow people to produce ammonium phosphate in their home, you know, in their yards. It's not that we wouldn't necessarily, although I suspect we probably wouldn't, but simply doing one, allowing a light industrial usage in a fully-contained building with modern and complete standards with respect to security, with respect to odor, with respect to impacts on the neighborhood, is fundamentally different from residential growing. So the council has been grappled hard with the issue of outdoor growing, reached a conclusion around the moratorium. It's not a closed issue forever, but it's not the same as the issue of this question. And during the outdoor growing debate, one of the most compelling questions asked of us at this podium was, well, how then is production going to happen? How will patients be able to get access to medical marijuana? And this is part of that answer, that the regular distribution system, the legal distribution system is a part of that. So I think this is the reason why the ordinance, although this is new ground in some ways, in most ways, it's identical to the way that we treat all other industrial and manufacturing and logistics products in our city. And the staff and the Planning Commission have done a good job in their construction of the ordinance, and the council spent a fair amount of time perfecting it, as much as it can be, perfecting it at the last session as well. So are there other comments any other members of the council want to make on the issue? Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I'll make a couple of comments. I spoke at length about this when we had, two weeks ago, or three weeks ago when we did this. The only reason that I would even come close to supporting this is because this is just distribution. It's not like we are opening up places for people to sell marijuana. It's not like we're opening up places for our areas so that other people can grow it. I would oppose those, and I have opposed those in the past, and I'd continue to oppose those. This is an area that will receive product, break it down, and give it to the dispensaries, which there are none in West Sacramento, but give it to the... or sell it to the dispensaries in other parts of the city of Sacramento or the surrounding area. I don't know how far it goes. It probably goes from Washington, I mean, from Oregon to San Francisco or thereabouts. But that's the only reason that I would support this, is because that's all it is. I wrestled with putting our toes underneath the tent, so to speak, to even allow this because I don't want the impression that this is something the city of West Sacramento supports, because it's nothing that I support. But at the same time, this is distribution, and it's not dispensing, or it's not growing. So anyway, those were the comments I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. All right, then, Item Eight, it's consideration of a public-private partnership between the city of West Sacramento and Assemble Sacramento to develop a trail rest stop on the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail. We have one request to speak, I don't know, Mr. Ledesma, do you want to take the item first?
I'll let him speak first, and then we'll...
Okay, and it's by, you might change your mind, it's by Andrew Sternfels. Mr. Sternfels?
I'll let him go first.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I'll be very brief. The staff presentation does a great job lining out what we're proposing to do. Basic concept is very simple. We believe in small-scale community placemaking, whether it's the free book, small book libraries that we have that are starting to grow in our community, or what I recently read today in Boston, putting random pianos out on street corners to create senses of place. Our concept is that for a small investment and partnering with all of our great partners in the city and our residents, that we can build small-scale, great community places. And we'd like to pilot that with a rest station on the Clarksburg Trail, seeing that the future growth of that trail can be a fantastic amenity for not just our community but the entire region. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I will keep it very brief. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I just really wanted to pull this, and thank you, Andrew, for your comments, and more importantly, thank you for your service and for initiating this with the city, and thanks to our Parks Director Cindy Tuttle for working and identifying this. If you haven't looked at the staff report, those at home, if you haven't pulled up the staff report, I urge you to do it and take a look at what's being articulated here, the agreement we're going into with Assemble Sacramento. This is a great opportunity for us to, as Mr. Sternfels said, to expand upon what is already a great burgeoning trail system along the Southport Parkway down to the Clarksburg Branch Trail. So it has an amazing potential, and it's taken a lot of work to get to this point. So I want to thank you, Mr. Sternfels, for all the work you've done on your own time to make this happen, but certainly look forward to the success of this going forward. So thank you.
Yeah, I want to call out because we had this debate about Brideway Play and, you know, and struggling with how to simultaneously unleash the energy and enthusiasm and the willingness of neighbors and parents and others to go do something in their neighborhood and also understand the equity issues in a community where not every neighborhood has the capacity, the financial capacity to accomplish that. And I think one of the ways that this item, I think, deals with that effectively, it does not, it doesn't, it's not proposing to leverage city dollars. It's not proposing to move this project to the front of the line ahead of projects in other neighborhoods by, through the fundraising effort. And I really appreciate the, you know, the work to try to have both our cake and eat it too, you know, go out and get some additional resources and care still about making sure that we're approaching the whole city with equity. So great work. All right, any other comments on consent? I would just point out, I did pull up last week's agenda from two weeks ago. We did the agenda, the agenda itself, the two-page summary and the full agenda to identify that what was up before us was, where'd it go, was the cannabis, the cannabis distribution center was the specific wording in the public agenda on the internet and printed as well. So, okay. Any, if there's no further discussions or motion on the consent agenda? Mr. Johansson moves, and Mr. Ledesma seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Right, that motion carries. So that moves us then to Item 12, which is consideration of a workshop on the draft terms of agreement with Waste Management Incorporated.
I'll crank this back up a little bit. Okay, good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Staff was before you in October of 2015 with initial waste management proposal for your consideration. At that time, staff sought and received direction from the council to begin a limited-term negotiation process with waste management. We have since completed that process with our consultant, R3 Consulting Group, which has resulted in the draft terms that are here before you this evening. Richard Tagore Irwin is here this evening to present the details of the draft terms, the rates as proposed by Waste Management, and how those terms and rates compare to other agreements in the region. I just want to note that it's important to point out that the rates that we're discussing this evening are waste management rates, and that our actual customer rates will be determined later through the rate study being conducted by administrative services, and that will be brought to the council later for consideration. Following Richard's presentation and council discussion, staff is recommending that the council provide feedback on these draft terms, direct staff to finalize a draft negotiation and agreement with Waste Management, which would incorporate any of your comments or recommendations, and we would then present that to council at a later date for execution. And finally, we're recommending execution of a contract amendment with R3 Consulting Group so we can finalize the negotiation process. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Richard for his presentation. He and I both will be available for questions when he's done. Thanks.
Good evening, mayor and council. Again, it's Richard Tagore Irwin with R3, and we always sort of start our presentation saying one kind of blanket statement, that we only work for public agencies, we do not work for any waste haulers, facility operators, or anybody else in that type of business. And I think Paulina hit it pretty well in terms of where we are with the negotiations. Sort of the overall, the big picture, that we want to make sure we have your feedback in before we go ahead and codify it into a franchise agreement. We do have a draft franchise agreement that we've worked on with Waste Management as well as the city and city staff, so they've reviewed that. We've gotten their comments back on it. We need your direction to finalize that and bring it back. So the basic term, it's a 10-year term, and I don't have a clicker, so... Okay, go ahead. It's a 10-year term with a 4% annual rate cap that the city would pay Waste Management. So that's a cap, so that's the highest that rate could ever increase. It also means that it can't go below zero. So if it's a, say you have a negative rate increase one year, it's just carried to the next year. So that's how that works. The agreement itself is based upon what we call best practices. It has all the terms and conditions, it has vehicle waits, hours of operation, safety standards, reporting requirements, all the insurance and indemnifications, it's a standard agreement. We kind of put this in a moderate of best practices because you can go way further in terms of much more aggressive on the environmental side. What we found is that significantly increases the cost that the hauler has to provide the services with. So we've kind of taken a middle road with it, trying to keep your rates as close as we can to where they are now. The new programs that they will be required to provide to the city are really to keep the city in compliance with the most recent legislative changes in terms of commercial recycling, which is AB 341. All of your commercial businesses throughout the city have to have some type of recycling program. That's been implemented, that's going to get ratcheted up to a higher level. AB 1594, which is basically your green waste and your organics has to be taken to a compost facility for the city to retain its diversion credit with the state. It's really, really important you're doing that now. Right now, that's going through Yolo County, and they're doing the composting on that. And the big one is AB 1826, which is a commercial multifamily organics diversion. That starts basically this month, and it is phased in over the next several years. It starts with a large commercial generators that generate eight cubic yards of organics or more per week. It's a lot of volume, basically large restaurants or food distribution. They have to have onsite waste diversion for their organics program starts this year, and it's phased in over the next several years. So the threshold of compliance starts to drop. So for the next four years, it's going to drop every year. So basically by 2020, pretty much all of your commercial generators will have to have both commercial recycling and commercial organics programs. Again, part of that is they've also going to add in not only the commercial organics but a residential food waste program as well, so your residents can add in their food waste to the green waste, and it's taken to composting. Staff support, Waste Management will provide staff support to make sure all these programs work, and what that's really tied into is they're required to meet a 50% diversion, franchise diversion, of materials they touch. It's a high number, it's hard for them to hit. That is not the same number as your state recording number, it's just specifically a contractual requirement to make sure that you're online with what you do with the state. That 50% will most likely be phased in over the first couple of years because commercial organics is going to be phased in as well. You want the two of them to work together. Additional new programs that I think will be very beneficial to your customers is on-call collection of universal waste, household hazardous waste and sharps, where your customer can call up, schedule an appointment, and it's picked up at their house, which is a great program, and we're seeing that kind of being rolled out throughout the state for many, many communities. Residential and multifamily bulky waste collection... Residential and multifamily bulky waste collection, similar program, they can call up when they have large items, a couch, a bed, something like that, and it's scheduled and it's picked up at their location, so it's not taken to drop-off center, they don't have to take it anywhere else. And really, a neat, new part of that is it's also going to be applied to multifamily. So your multifamily complexes, through their management structure, they can call and have that scheduled as well. What we found on a statewide basis, there's a direct relationship between illegal dumping and lack of multifamily bulky waste cleanup. Once they put multifamily bulky waste, the illegal dumping drops tremendously. And, and again, the continuation where the city will continue providing the city billing, they'll be working with Waste Management on the actual customer service on that, Waste Management will be providing a higher level of customer service to support those services. You've got your CFL collection, your educational grant program, which is about $20,000 a year now, it's going to go up to $25,000, and continuation of your special events. And what we did is we tried to take a snapshot of what Waste Management's proposed rates are compared to surrounding community rates today. So the rates that we have for Waste Management is shown here are relatively low on the residential side, you've got some of the, the most attractive rates in the area, and this is comparing their projected July 1st, 2017 rates to current rates. So between now and July 2017, the other communities are going to have one or two rate increases, so it's going to even be a higher spread on that, so we're trying to lock them in today for those futures. The commercial, commercial rates, as you can see, are by far some of the lowest in the area, they're very, very attractive, and so I think it's going to be very beneficial to, to your commercial customers, particularly when they get augmented with the recycling programs and the, and the organics programs. That's, and so our recommendation is, good to go ahead, you know, depending upon the feedback we get from you, any directions, to go ahead and complete the negotiations with Waste Management, incorporate all of the major deal points in, as well as any other direction that you have, and, and bring back a franchise agreement. If you don't want to do that, then we would recommend that you stop tonight, in essence, with the negotiations and start an RFP process because you will run out of time if you don't. So that's, that's where we're at, but our recommendation right now is, is based upon your direction is to go ahead and finish up the negotiation process with Waste Management. And with that, any questions you may have?
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, on the HHW waste, does that include pharmaceuticals?
Not right now.
No. Okay, so I know there's, the city has a couple locations where these things are dropped off, so that, that won't be included, at least with...
Not on an on-call basis, but I think the farm, the take-back pharmaceuticals are still, it's an ongoing program, but if that's something that you would like us to try to explore with Waste Management, we can, we can put that on the...
Yeah, I think it's really just making sure that there's a facility in the, the city to be able to do that, I know there's, the city is doing that now, I think it's the police station?
It does. I'm sorry.
It's, I'm sorry, actually it does include pharmaceuticals, not, not controlled substances, but other pharmaceuticals are included in the contract.
They are in there?
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor President Cindy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the, the draft franchise agreement and the 4% cap, because I know you've looked at all of the agreements around, around us, how does that compare with other municipalities?
I mean, other municipalities have no cap or floor, it's just whatever the adjustment mechanism is for that particular year, whether it's a CPI or a modified, which we're suggesting is a refuse rate, refuse rate index, which is a series of nationally publicized indices, they don't necessarily have floors or caps on them, to cost of service studies, which we strongly recommend you don't do, which is in essence a guaranteed profit return. So the 4% cap is a pretty good number, and if you look at the last 10 years, CPI and refuse rate index, it's been about 2.5% to 2.7% average over the last 10 years.
So for us to do a contract as opposed to a bid, at least for me, it, you know, I think, said in the last one, it needs to be, it needs to be really good, so, so I'm looking at your table five, in terms of new, net new benefits, just to cut to the shake, because so much of the other things are like, they'll comply, they'll help us comply with this law or with that law, which I imagine any, any hauler would, would do, they would have, they would have to do, and we would have to require that to happen, right, so those are not really, a lot of the, a lot of the programs are not really optional in some sense, that, to the extent that they are required for us to be able to meet our commercial organics requirements and that sort of thing, any, any arrangement's going to have to include them, because we're not going to, we can't be out of compliance. So maybe if you can help me see what the big, what the, what the, what the really, what the distinct benefits are that we wouldn't, we might not expect to get if we had, if we had gone out, or if we still went out to, to a competitive bid?
The, I mean, the, the on-call bulky waste, again, it's, many communities do have a program like that, but they're incorporating that into their, their rate structure. The HHW on-call was a very good program, and as Paulina pointed out, corrected me, the pharmaceuticals, those are all good programs. The internal, you know, staff support to make these programs work, one of the big issues that's been becoming more and more difficult piece to negotiate is a franchised diversion requirement. Haulers are very, have been very uncomfortable putting that out because they're held to that contractually, there's liquidated damages, there's termination issues related to that, so that's something that's, that's been much harder to get on a competitive basis than a negotiated basis, they're just very afraid of that. But, but some of the other benefits are really are some financial issues, coming back to the city, you know, the road impact fee is a big one. And that, we did, we did work with your staff a little bit on that one, and we looked at the, you know, the, in essence, the unfunded road maintenance, we did, we took a look at that, you plug in, in essence, the vehicles, the trash trucks, the routing, the number of them, and you could come up with a pretty good nexus on that. The 250,000, frankly, it's a low number, the, you can make a pretty strong argument that the trash vehicles, actually it's a little higher impact than the 250, but we thought we'd start with a conservative number on that one. There's also the, the street sweeping fee that's going to come in to provide additional street sweeping, those types of things, the AB 939 fee, which again is to help support the internal city programs, those are all, you know, I hate to say this, but they're the financial side of, of the deal, if you will. If you go out to competitive bid and you ask for the same types of things, your rates are going to go up. That's, that's really the, I think, the debate we have to have is, you've got a very good rate package now, what your hauler's charging you, you can get all these services and programs if you go out through competitive process, but we have no guarantee what's going to happen to the rates. And from looking at the surrounding communities, you know, we're, we're pretty confident, unfortunately, confident that the rates would go up.
Because they're, they would go up in this arrangement, too.
Well, again...
By 10 to 20% or 25% in a couple cases, it'll look like. I mean, depending on how we translate them into rates, but, but our, our cost, and the franchise fee is covering a lot of those, those elements, and, and the way it's been presented to us is, you know, essentially, the elements have been put together based on how much of a franchise fee we might be willing to bear, but we could, that's the same stance we might take with a, with any other bidder. So I was trying to understand, what's, what's, what is there, what's the distinct benefit of this arrangement as opposed to a competitive bid, because, because we could choose not to have a franchise fee increase at all, and then we'd have to give up some of those things, or we could add them, add more of them in and pay a higher franchise fee, but, so it's just, it makes it difficult to really ascertain what's, what are, because we're paying for most of these benefits, right?
Yes, yes, you are. I mean, again, the, the programs that are, have been suggested here are, are very similar to the programs you'd be asking for in the competitive process, so I can't really point to something that says, this is so much better than anything you would get programmatically wise, taking the customer impact, rate impact out of the equation that you could not get from, from competitive process.
Then on the food, the food waste part, so we raised it the last, the last time this was up, the, the food waste collection, I think, for the non-yard waste, and that, and is that in here on a, on a roughly equivalent schedule, or is that a, we'll, we'll get to that at some point during the term of the contract?
No, it's, it's in the same schedule. The program basically would be for, for those multifamily complexes that don't have a green waste program, they would be provided a separate container for food waste.
Yeah, these are multifamily and single-family?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And it would be, and they would be collected on the same weekly schedule, because it has to be done weekly, so the, the same day of schedule as the regular trash collection.
And the sustainability coordinator that you described as internal, but the document made it sound as though it would be a Waste Management employee working at Waste Management?
That's correct.
So not somebody on our, it would not be funding a coordinator inside our operations, so what's the nature of that? What exactly is the, is that somebody that's performing a set of duties about, you know, education and outreach across the whole portfolio of Waste Management cities in the region, and we're, we're getting essentially that generic set of collateral and that sort of thing, or is there, is there something that's actually West Sacramento specific and driven by that?
The, the job duties and whatnot, and, and the requirements will be West Sacramento-driven. It has to be tailored to your programs to make sure your programs work. It is an internal staff person at Waste Management, it's not a city staff, and they're not funding that position for the city, so that is an internal position.
And is it sustainability from a waste stream perspective, or if, if, is it sustainability in a broader context?
It's sustainability within the context of, of the solid waste programs.
Okay. And the, oh, there was, there's a, we've been, both through our own city programs and a few others that were partners, and now we've been encouraging some of our local employers and contractors to do the career pathway, internships and that sort of thing for young people, and I notice in here, we have the requirement that they do a specific Earth Day event and the high school environmental ed program, but I'm, but it's to, like, what priority, how we, how we set these priorities with respect to what, so we want them involved with young people and with education, but how, the how of that, I mean, why, why those specific elements and not, not some other, I'd be curious to, to know.
I can speak to the education program. When we first received some funding in our last contract for high school level curriculum, we were searching for opportunities to partner with the school district, and I was able to negotiate a contract, or not negotiate, but a memorandum of understanding with Yolo County Office of Education, so we used that funding for them to work directly with the teachers, they're most familiar with what the teachers are required to perform and the curriculum that they have to use in their classroom. What we're trying to do now is expand on that contract to be K through 12, right now it's limited to high school level. It's, it's not that we're not open to other programs, and, and it's really just staff trying to figure out what best works with other partnerships, how the funding can be best used again to schools, so it's not that it's limited to those things, it's just what I'm doing right now, and I'd like to continue to support that program at a minimum.
So is it in the agreement, then, those things, or...
No, the funding is, so they would, they would provide, the Waste Management contract would provide funding to the city, then we would use that funding to support those programs, and so like, right now, I'm using that funding to support the memorandum of understanding with Yolo County Office of Education.
Okay.
So that would be, we would prioritize how we use that funding, you know, at the staff level or based on council direction, if you had a specific project that would work.
Yeah, I mean, once, once we're in the mode of, I've got to do a franchise rate change, you know, in order to fund each of these elements, I have a strong interest in making sure that we're investing in sustainability, education, and youth outreach and that sort of thing that has the highest potential to advance our objectives, and we often, you know, like, like TDMs and stuff like that, we sometimes don't, we don't apply the same performance metrics and other things to it, so I, and we never, I don't think we've ever really weighed in on that because they're not, they're not massive issues for the, you know, for the council, but I just, I, so if we're not setting that in stone, if we're not, we're deciding tonight that this is going to pay for Earth Day for 10 years...
No, it's just an example.
...when Earth Day may not be the right, may not be the right investment to really, to reach the larger, to induce the behavior change on the largest, on the largest scale that we want to accomplish for sustainability.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions at this point? Okay, thanks. We have a couple of requests, first is Tim McGill from Waste Management.
Well, I'd like to thank the city for the opportunity to sit down and put together a proposal, and I guess one of the things that I see as a major factor here is, we're eliminating your deficit, your complete deficit in the solid waste program, which is half a million dollars. We're adding new programs, and we're projecting a, a cost in the future, and that cost, everybody else is going to be raising their rates as well, we're getting locked into what's in the future. If you take these things and the programs and everything we're putting together, I guess you have the option of doing what you want, but the law's requiring us to come up with some programs. There's about, over the 10-year contract, about $13 million worth of new programs and financial benefits to the city, which I think are fairly significant when you take into consideration the road impact fee, the roughly $500,000 deficit, I mean, that's, that's hardcore savings for the city. And as I said last time I spoke to the council, this is a partnership, and we're in a position to give a lot back, and I think we are. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
All right, thank you. All right, Emily Finn, Green Waste Recovery.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Emily Finn, I'm with Green Waste Recovery. We're a local waste hauler and processor in the San Jose area, and after me speaking will be Erin French from Green Waste of Sacramento, so we do have a local presence here. I'm also representing our sister companies, Anchor Road Resource Management and Zero Waste Energy Development Company. Our family of companies is 22 times carbon negative. We're a logistics company, we haul trash and materials, we're 22 times carbon negative. Our focus is on sustainability in all of our collection and processing operations. We would love the opportunity to bid this contract. The gentleman that spoke before me, when I hear that Waste Management has the ability to absorb a $500,000 annual deficit and, and bridge that gap, what that says to me is that there is an incredible amount of profit built into the current rate system. When I read back through the staff report, a couple of quick quotes here, at the end of the initial discussions, Waste Management proposed to the city and R3 staff that they could provide these services and fees at rates below the current rates paid to them. And what I see in the staff report is an almost 13% increase. When I compare the rates that you guys are paying right now, or that the residents and the businesses are paying to the local area, and I look at how light your programs and services are under the current Waste Management contract, as well as under this quote-unquote "enhanced service" package, I look at that and I say, you guys aren't getting the most bang for your buck. Going out to competitive bid is the only way that you know that you're getting the best services for the most competitive price. That's a very key, key piece and a responsibility that you guys have as council members to your constituents, because this contract hasn't been out to bid for 30 years. The terms before you today have a 10-year franchise agreement consideration with two five-year extensions, that would be another 20 years, that would be 50 years that you've never gone out to bid. Our company hopes that you will make a decision tonight to support the competitive bid process. The costs would be recouped during the process, and one of the joys is that you would have the ability to look at that RFP and actually look, like the mayor was asking, about the level of services, are we memorializing the outreach, what is the requirement? All of those things would be detailed and spelled out in an RFP, all the bidders would bid on those, and you would have an apples-to-apples comparison. In the last 10 years, our company has competitively bid against Waste Management, and we have taken away 14 of their contracts. In 12 of those 14, we were the lowest bidder. And in most of those contracts, as the gentleman from R3 said, we have a 65% diversion, franchised material diversion rate. What he had mentioned is it's very hard to get your hauler to commit to a diversion rate for franchised materials. We just signed seven contracts in the peninsula cities for franchised materials with a minimum commitment of a 65% diversion rate for the materials that we manage. You guys can get better services, and you can get them at better costs. I strongly urge you to go out to competitive bid. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Erin French.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Erin French, I represent Green Waste of Sacramento, debris box service, we are a current franchise hauler in this market, and also Florence Perkins Public Disposal Materials Recovery Facility. I would also like to strongly urge you to put this contract out to bid. I also believe that we owe it to our ratepayers to give them the best service at the most competitive rate, and that's all I have to say, but I do have some, some pamphlets, if I may distribute them to you, they're concise, cogent document that, that explain our capability as a waste hauling company and diversion company, rather, so may I, may I bring them to you? Okay, great, and that's it.
All right, we'll return to the council then for further questions or discussion. Is there a motion? No, we have a, well, if the request, the recommended action from staff is to direct that we proceed with a franchise agreement with Waste Management and not to proceed with a competitive bid and then to execute the $12,000 contract to complete the negotiations.
Well, I can start out some kind of conversation. We've had Waste Management now for just going on 30 years. And they've always been a responsive company. And I realize that they're in a for-profit business. And at the same time, they do so many things that don't come up on the charts or don't come up on a fee, a fee chart or anything else. Do things for Little League, they do things for senior programs, they do things for community-based organizations that really don't have the wherewithal, the monies or anything else, but they're just good projects. They're just good for a community. I don't know much about Green Waste, but I for one think Waste Management is a good company for West Sacramento, and I think their reputation is such that we will get the biggest bang for our buck.
Other comments? Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I do have just a question for Paulina or our consultant. It's just, because a lot of my questions around the, not the process, but sort of what gets memorialized in the agreement. I hear Mr. Kristoff's point, and even when we talk about household waste and we talk about food waste, the things that were kind of not clear for me is what Mr. Cabaldin, what the mayor was talking about, which is the how we do it. That part just needs to be, for me, there was one part that was, I wasn't quite clear on. And to Mr. Kristoff's point, there are things in the community we could point to that Waste Management, but those things need to be, they need to be articulated. I think when we went into this process, we knew we were kind of foregoing the competitive bid process. We know what that process is there for, right? And it's to ensure that we are doing the right thing from the, kind of providing the right service for the, for the public using taxpayer dollar. And I think I would like to advise you as you go forth and talk about this. Those are the kind of things that matter to me. For instance, the question I had is about food waste. And, okay, we're going to provide the container and it's going to show up. Who provides the education to the households around that? Comes through our public works department? Do we, are we expected to put that into our monthly statement at our cost? Is it their cost? And how is that fulfilled over the, it just wasn't clear. We say it's a program, but those are the kind of commitments I want to make sure, because it only works if it, people know how to use it and people know how to abide by, right? And so again, those are kind of the things that I want to make sure that we leave no doubt about how we are going to go about if we go about this agreement going forward. I'm supportive of moving forward in negotiations, but I just think we need to be, those are the things that we have to capture in this agreement, because at the performance metrics, we can't just rely on what we thought would happen. We have to be able to say, we knew these were things that were expected to happen and these are the things that did happen or they didn't. And I just can't, I may not be here in 10 years to kind of judge it at that point if we go forward with it, if it works out, but I think that's, that would be, I'm anticipating, is that where the commitment is clearly laid out, the expectations of us clearly laid out who's going to do what down the line.
I'd like to comment on that. So the draft franchise agreement does have very specific information in it related to how these programs will be implemented, and there's also exhibits that will be attached to the draft agreement. And again, all of this will be presented to council for final consideration. You know, when we finalize all these details, we'll bring that whole document back to you. And the exhibits will include things like our outreach program. Who does what? Who pays for the utility bill inserts? Who provides the outreach to the schools? You know, so that, all that information will be explicit in those details. We'll also have tracking mechanisms too, where the Waste Management staff will have to report back to us. You know, what were the results quarterly, annually, things like that? So that all is included in very much specific detail in the document and the attachments or exhibits that go along with it. And even down to the door-to-door program, like when they'll pick up, how the company or how the customer will call for HSW. All of that information is going to be part of an attachment to our agreement.
And really adding to that, that's why we needed the feedback tonight before we have Waste Management and ourselves jointly start developing, it's really the implementation plans. How are you going to roll out the citywide commercial organics program? What are the metrics for doing that? How are you going to roll this out to the residential program, whether it's single family or multifamily? How do you do that? All that will be laid out very clearly in the franchise agreement that's brought back to you. That's the direction that we'll provide it.
Mr. Johansson.
So when will the franchise agreement come back to us?
We're targeting June, July, late June or July is what we're looking to do. Because again, it's going to take, there's details that need to be worked out. The basic agreement, we've got, you know, the, in essence, the performance standards and insurance and all that, we've got that, but we've got to really work through all the implementation details. That's what's going to take a little more time.
Mayor Portman sending?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this juncture we're at is obviously a really important one, and so this decision is weighing really heavily on me. As I was going into this discussion tonight, I was thinking what our responsibilities are, is the cost to the residents, enhancing the services we have, and really a comparison to others. So there've been some good points made tonight about what, you know, going out in open market. I feel like the work that's been done, you answered the questions that we had in absence of doing that, and that was, that was really critical to me. I want to know, I can look a voter or resident in the face and say, we did due diligence. This is, this is the best service at the lowest cost. And so I do think this is a really critical juncture for us in making a decision how to move tonight. I also just think about the bills that arrive in people's homes, and so I'm thinking, well, you know, 4%, and 4%, possibly 4%, 4%. And I'm thinking about other things that are on that statement, water and sewer, and what do those look like? And that's just, it's just what I'm, what I'm thinking about tonight as we're going forward.
Kristoff? A quick comment. I think if there is any one issue that I have heard about in the number of, for a few years that I've been on the council, and that is, is the rates. People want lower rates. Now, I realize everybody wants to pay less, but you know, it is, that is the issue. And then you come and you weigh like Our Lady of Grace School gets a bin for Carnival or something. Holy Cross gets a, two or three bins for their picnic day, and the school district gets something for, you don't, and I know that there's been times where, as you're working with nonprofit organizations or agencies, they forget some of those kinds of things. And so they'll call. I make a call to Tim or I make a call to Jimmy over there at Waste Management, the next day, the materials are there. They're not looking at charging or whatever it may be. They're just good neighbors. And they're the kinds of companies that you want in your city that will, you know, just help that quote-unquote "city experience," so to speak. And, you know, it's like I say, the only, the only issue I've ever heard is, oh my gosh, they're charging too much money. But, you know, that happens with me and water, that happens with sewer, it happens with everything. And so, but at the same time, I think that their public service and their public participation, if you can write something in the agreement, that would be really helpful too, because I think that's important.
Yeah, I have never been a fan of not bidding this. I think that's no secret. And when I, and I think when I voted for the franchise last time, I was like Mr. Ledesma. I thought, well, I'm not going to be here, I won't be here the next time this comes up. And I'm still here with Mr. Kristoff. This, I mean, this fundamental issue, because this is our largest, this is the largest public service that we operate, that we do by contract by far. And given the, given the, really actually the origin of this city and as the California, as the Cal Water Company that used to serve this, this community for water, essentially in a similar franchise agreement was a major flashpoint for the, for the community and trying to unwind and get out of that relationship was extraordinarily difficult, part because it had been in it for so long and in part because it was so lucrative for them that they weren't willing to give it up. And, you know, the comment by the agreement folks about, you know, how much lucrative this one is, same thing. I mean, I, this, and I'll be very direct with the Waste Management folks, I mean, the action that Waste Management took in Oakland two years ago with respect to when Oakland awarded their contract to a different company and Waste Management simultaneously filed litig, very expensive litigation and launched a voter referendum. To me, that says there's enough, there's enough lucrative profit in that agreement over and above what's needed in order to provide those services to justify an expensive legal and referendum campaign, but also to disrespect the fundamental competitive and governmental decision-making process of a city. I just don't, I don't want to accidentally be in that situation where we're not recognizing the fiscal realities and how much, you know, how, Waste Management is a private company, they are absolutely entitled to be making a fair profit. And especially because if we were to operate this service directly, we would spend as much money as them, if not more. All right, so it's, it's not, there's nothing evil in Waste Management making profit in a service that we need and they can deliver more cheaply and effectively than we can. But the question always will be, could someone else do that even, even better or even more cheaply? And the only way you find that out really is through, is through a bid process. So I've been a huge advocate, not just on this one, but on a lot of other domains and to my colleagues' annoyance, that we, although often concurrents, that we, where possible, do bids. And we have never done this contract in that way. So that's why, you know, so many specific questions about, about the deal and, you know, I'm still, I'm going to support it tonight. I'm going to support it tonight. I think it's the right, it's the right framework. But if it comes back and it's not, and if there's been any walking back on any of this stuff, I'm just like, just barely there, particularly given the term that we're talking about. Because I haven't heard the, you know, the, you know, the absolute unique thing that we absolutely are sure, and I'm essentially relying on the judgment of our staff team and the city manager and our consultant, that we would be, you know, highly unlikely to, to reach a better overall agreement, including accounting for the important things that Mr. Kristoff said, right? Those things do matter. They matter, they matter a great deal and, I mean, they are good business for Waste Management, but they do, it makes a difference when you have a good corporate partner and citizen in your community. And so that, even though they're not, it's not quantified in this way, and I think that's what Mr. Kristoff's point is, we do know that they need to, that needs to be accounted for and we, you know, we need to be considering that. And we are, and I think that's one of the reasons why we've gotten to this stage in this process. But, you know, certainly the issues that have been raised about making sure that the, that the final version of the agreement is reflective of the, of the points that have been made tonight. And at our last meeting where we had a more extensive conversation about the content to revisit those and make sure that that's, that's really, that's really where we're at would be important for me. But I'm, but I'm prepared to support going forward with this, this tonight and continuing our, hopefully concluding this and continuing our relationship with Waste Management. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and second by Mr. Kristoff. Any further discussion? All those who favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing done? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks to the negotiating teams on both, you know, both sides of the equation. This is incredibly complicated, lots of stuff to work through. You know, we're in this mode, we, 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 we've been great partners right before the negotiations, we'll be great partners the day after they're fully completed. But thanks to, you know, to Waste Management, to our consultant, to the staff team who I know put an enormous amount of effort into trying to make sure that the city, the residents, the businesses and the ratepayers are best served, so thank you. All right, that brings us to item 13, which is consideration of a workshop on 21st century And this follows through on work from the council strategic planning session and a subcommittee that comprised of Mr. Ledesma and myself have been working pursuant to that session with the, with the department, the city manager's office, so some extended work, but now turn it over to Chief. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Deanna Stevens. I'm the deputy chief of police and I'm here to give an update on 21st century policing. So please, first, I need to give a disclaimer. I'm not good at public speaking, so I am going to read through the presentation and that's really in an attempt to be succinct and considerate of your time, so bear with me. Are we up?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. So when Chief McDonald came on, he immediately began conversations with police administration and staff. As any new police chief would, he began looking closely at our department and how we operate, addressing ways to improve. He brought a unique perspective as he came from a large Southern California agency who had in fact undergone federal consent decree. In short order, we began to pull apart and scrutinize our policies and procedures line by line to ensure we were meeting not only federal and state guidelines, but law enforcement best practices as well. We also began significant audits within each division of the department and embarked on efforts for CLIA accreditation, which simply is an outside auditing mechanism to ensure we're in fact doing what our policies and procedures say we're doing and ensuring those policies and procedures are in fact best practice. Inviting outside auditors into the organization is our way of demonstrating transparency and our willingness to be open to critique. We initiated more robust community outreach programs and engagement through focused community meetings and formal public information officer programs. We conducted department-wide ethics, diversity and leadership training. We revamped both our entire hiring and complaint intake processes and instituted CompStat in an effort to track crime trends and focus on crime reduction. In January of 2014, council published the city's strategic plan summary and prioritized police enforcement strategies and actions as an action item. The police department at that time was continuing efforts in community outreach, specifically social media. We had implemented the senior lead officer program to immediately address community concerns to specific issues in geographical areas. And we began research on body worn cameras and new technology. We are currently beta testing cameras for various vendors. Technology is continuously changing and we, not unlike other law enforcement agencies, are struggling to find a system that best fits our needs. In August of 2014, the Michael Brown shooting occurred in Ferguson, Missouri. The landscape of law enforcement began to change as conversations about distrust, misconduct and racial tension were at the forefront. During this timeframe, we were also in conversation about our own relationship with our community and ways to not only create conversation with community members, but additionally garner their trust, be internally accountable and be transparent about who we are and what we do. In January of 2015, council published the strategic plan summary, which included police review process best practice. In our minds, this priority not only proved that council was in fact paying attention to what was going on nationally, but we're looking for additional ways to help the police department improve, and we were thankful for your insight and direction. We had already begun implementing a serious incident review board as outlined in our department policies, but continued efforts in pursuing help through outside reviews and investigations of significant uses of force and officer-involved shootings. Through collaboration with other Yolo County law enforcement and the DA, a county-wide MOU is now in place. In February- In February, the president's task force on 21st Century Policing was convened and had published their interim report. The final report was published in May of 2015. The task force was charged with identifying best practices and offering recommendations on how policing practices, quote, "promote effective crime reduce, reduction while building public trust," unquote. Those recommendations are organized around six main topic areas referred to as pillars. As listed, they are building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime prevention, training and education, and officer wellness and safety. These recommendations legitimized the specific efforts and focus that the West Sacramento Police Department had been spending over the past couple of years. In October of 2015, Governor Brown approved California Assembly Bill 953. This is also known as the Racial and Identity Profiling Act of 2015, RIPA. This act, among other things, would revise the definition of racial profiling to instead refer to racial or identity profiling, and make a conforming change to the prohibition against peace officers engaging in that practice. In summary, RIPA would require state and local policing agencies to annually report to the Attorney General data on all stops, as defined, conducted by the agency, and require that data to include specific information, including the time, date, and location of the stop, the reason for the stop, as well as search and seizure details. An agency our size will be required to report this information by April 1st, 2023. In January of 26, 2016, council outlined the 2016 strategic plan summary titled 21st Century Policing. During council retreat, you asked, how do we monitor and assess the relationship between our community and the police? How do we identify discriminatory practices, issues, and trends? And what information should be collected? And you asked for that to be presented in a quarterly dashboard format. And that begins the conversation, really, on data collection. Again, I'd like to emphasize that the department recognizes and embraces this as a necessary means of internal and external checks and balances. Currently, we're able to collect the highlighted data, its age, gender, race, and zip code, as well as complaint and use of force information. The majority of this information is collected from those who are issued citations as a result of a stop, arrested, or a contact or report or a complaint is taken. It doesn't, however, cover the myriad of other categories as outlined as mandatory in RIPA. This information that we do collect and maintain has to be manually tallied, sorted, and analyzed through several internal programs. In addition, when conducting that analysis of the information, we have to have a means of comparison. As a side note, comparative data used was based on census tract information, which hasn't been updated since 2011. So additional deficiencies include identifying the actual methods of capturing the information, specifically all stops made by officers, analyzing and storing the data, and once analyzed, determined what format to use as the final dashboard report. We've conducted research and outreach to agencies such as Sacramento Police Department, who is currently capturing a significant portion of the data, but are also looking as reported, at reporting formats. We reached out to additional agencies in our region, who really have not even placed these upcoming reporting mandates on their radar. This includes agencies in Yolo County. Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, however, has shared with us their reporting mechanism, which is Code for America, a public information sharing portal of collected and analyzed data. And lastly, Oakland Police Department, who not only is under federal consent decree, but they are also involved in the National Police Data Initiative. This is another initiative coming out of Washington in an effort to address the task force recommendations on data and technology. It is not only an open data sharing mechanism, but it's also used for internal accountability and problem identification. One hundred and one data sets are collected for these purposes. Having said all of that, we have spent a significant amount of time on product vendors who are currently ahead of the curve and are best attempting to address RIPA requirements. The one we believe has best met our reporting needs is the one that Oakland is currently using, which is software created by Forensic Logic, referred to as Leap Network Dashboard. That specific dashboard product has been demonstrated to staff by vendors and a representative from Oakland PD. Again, this is for the dashboard only, and it is still woefully deficient regarding the data collection. This is an example of the Leap Network Dashboard as provided by Forensic Logic. Again, we still have to determine how we're going to collect the stop data information in the field. We are currently looking at options on how we may automate this, but as of now, the Leap Dashboard product does not integrate with our current CAD TRITech system. Our CAD vendor and Forensic Logic are working together to remedy this issue and are looking to have the solution in place by 2017. For now, we are continuing to look for a workaround, but it is important to understand that this is a tremendous undertaking. It's the police department's recommendation that council consider using RIPA as the guideline for our reporting requirements, as we believe it is extremely exhaustive and comprehensive, and in fact will be a statutory requirement. The department also respectfully requests council to consider and give direction on the dashboard format of reporting this data. The cost associated with the vendors at this point has not yet been determined. That concludes the presentation. If there are any questions.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thanks, Chief, even though you didn't speak tonight. I appreciate the effort and, all the effort and the thoughtfulness that you put into this. This is, this was, again, the mayor cited our conversation back at the strategic planning meeting in January, and this is one of the subjects that is one of the tougher ones, but that, that we have, at least I've had here, about, about how we interact with the police force. And answer that question to our residents is, how do you know things are going well? I think it's, I think there, we can cite a few incidents here and there in the six years I've been here. It's, it's come into question, but this is a step towards how, how do we better know that? And I appreciate all the work you've done around researching, not just kind of what's available, the tremendous amount, even, of information you had to pull out, and your staff had to pull out, to get to us some, some initial data and dashboard. Unfortunately, our, you know, I know we have some catching up to do on our technology side, to kind of make it a little easier to work with, and you're still looking ahead at some of the systems that are available, which I think is hopeful, and that standardizes what everybody's looking at, and, and I think that's one of the goals we all have. So we're all sort of talking the same language from community to community. But I, I have to say, one of the things, as a council member representing the entire city and, and folks who have, that look at our public safety and enforcement officers, we, I always wanted to have a, aspire to have a police department that is very open to, you said, open to criticism and critique. That was also, like I said, reflective and thoughtful about how they went about things. And so far, in your, I mean, really, in your efforts and your, in your steps towards that, I've seen that. Intent means everything, at least, it means a lot to me. So in talking to residents, I can firmly say that the intent that you've shown, the leadership you've shown, Chief, and both of you have shown, and through this effort, has been meaningful to me, that we're, you're trying to create that openness so that there is accountability. We trust you and our officers implicitly. We all know in public service is trust but verify, and you, you understand that. And that, that's important to me, that we start off on that step. It goes a long way to answering the questions that we initially asked, that I take very seriously. Being a Hispanic male and having been a young Hispanic male in a bad neighborhood, things can happen. And I, I think about those things for parents in any part of our city. And I want to know that I can come to a police force, that, like I said, that, that has this sort of openness, and how we, how we communicate, how we trust each other, and the processes we, we, we always build. This is sort of the first step, mind you, I am aware of that. But it is the kind of the constant painting of the bridge, right? We're going to get so far, and then we're going to, we're going to have to turn around and go back the other way and find more. But you've certainly been open toward it, and I'm really looking forward to keep moving down the road. I am, I, I am, and this is nothing on you, of course, but I am mindfulness of the time and effort, and which means resources and dollars this costs us, right, to kind of pull together information. Just something, if, if we want this sort of accountability, these sorts of dashboards, at some point, we're probably going to, you're probably saying we're going to have to invest in this. And I'm, I think that's the wise question to ask. The question is, it's making sure it's something that we know will bring us, you know, the right, the right foundation for how we move forward, it's the right investment for us, for you. And again, that kind of brings us the information we need. But I really want to just applaud you for kind of following up. We didn't, you, you, you're, you've been on this, you've been in touch with us, the city manager, we've gotten your communication, asking the questions, and to our meeting last week, kind of briefing us on what you might present tonight. And so I appreciate that, and both your efforts, and I look forward to continuing the conversation. So, thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
Well, thank you. Yeah, the, thanks for the work on this. And it, it looks like it's a, it's quite the, quite the project. And I know there's a lot of other agencies that are going through similar things. A lot of the core systems are going to electronic management and having a very difficult time doing that. And these aren't cheap programs. They're expensive, and it's staff time to... But looking at this, it looks, you know, one of the things I would look at is, I'd like to see kind of a roadmap on how you get there. You know, you've got kind of a, you know, one piece of software, and I don't know if there's any others out there, that can accommodate the data, but there's also the data capture. And I think you've mentioned that, that you don't want, you know, otherwise you're going to hire 10 people just to, to enter this stuff, whereas if you had a process where it'd be entered automatically, and, you know, that, that type of thing. And then to have a system to be accommodated. So it looks like you're not ready there yet, and there's, there's going to be some cost associated with this. So that's kind of why I'm looking forward to see what the, the plan would be to get to this area. And then the other thing about the, I think the dashboards are great, but I think, you know, it's really the analytics that go behind that. Because, you know, it's one thing to say, oh, our arsons are up, or our assaults are up. But to kind of see what the relationships is, so you can kind of predict, you know, problems and areas that's, that may look like there, there are problems developing. And that's kind of one of the things I think we talked about at the, at the strategy session. It's almost like predictive policing. You know, you want to try to see if you can nip something in the bud before it gets to the point where it becomes a problem, and, and see these precursors of a problem. So, and you can't do that without data, and you can't do that without the proper analytics that make the relationships you need to do to be able to see that. But, so I, I think this is a, a good start, but it sounds like you've got a whole process to go through to get to where you need to be. And, you know, I'd like to see what, what this would look like in terms of totally compliant with certain, with the current standards. You know, what is, what are the best practices? You've got some cities mentioned here. Oakland, of course, is a big city, and it looks like if the federal mandate, there may be federal money behind that, I'm not sure. But, you know, there, there could be federal or state money behind, you know, if the goal is here, it is, is to create more public or police partnerships with the community, funding available to help, you know, at least defer some of these costs, or defray some of these costs. So I think it's a good start, though.
Mr. Johnson, any?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you very much for the presentation. I, a lot of work's been done, and I think you're hearing all of our gratitude. I think the RIPA framework, you asked that question, it seems like that makes sense since that will become what has to happen. And then I think, I think it would be what, what other things would be useful to our city or to the department. I do know that you, you do look at predictive policing, because I've been to a CompStat meeting, so I, I've seen that in action. And so I, I think, I think we are seeing that. I think to Mr. Johansson, Johansson's point is, what, how much more data do we, might we need to collect, and what would it tell us? So for me, it's all, it's the, it's the dashboard, but then what does that lead us to know? Or what would that, how would that help you and this, and us do our work? So I, I think, I think it's great that the research has been done. I think there's, obviously, I think there's a little more, and then, and then how, how does that move our, move us forward in terms of your ability and the department's ability and the city's ability to do public safety work?
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, I, I too would commend the work that you've done here so far. I mean, it's, there's a lot of information in here, and, and I just want to make sure that you don't forget the major function that you have. You, you guys get the bad guys, and you keep our community safe. And that's, that's what it's all about to me, is making sure our community is safe. And if there are things that go on, they get properly looked at, and, and we try to make sure we take out the bad guys that, that committed those. I'm really not a techie guy, but at the same time, I realize that it is, it, it's part of the fabric now. Other communities throughout the United States have shown that some of this kind of stuff can work, and it can calm the fears that some of those communities had. And so I, I really appreciate the, the work that you, Chief, and, and all the rest of the guys on your, on your team do for the city of West Sacramento. Because, I mean, I think that we've had issues in the past, and I think that the council has looked at them straightforward and said, okay, hey, look, we can't, we can't have this kind of activity or, or, or behavior. And I, I think that you're putting together a real good police department, and you should be pretty proud of all of that. And I'm proud of you for, for doing some of that. So I, I'd just like to give the police department a lot of kudos, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
The, the time to be looking at mechanisms for transparency and accountability is when you don't have a problem. It's not, it's not in the depths of the chaos. I mean, I've been to, was it Ferguson, like, within a couple of weeks after the, the incidents there, and the, I've spent a lot of time with the mayor of Baltimore and other places, and it's clear that, you know, trying to, trying to, at that moment, it's too late. And you end up making the wrong choices anyway. And so we're fortunate that, and I think, you know, just, all you've shown us here, I think, is the, like, the stock data that's in the Leap system. It's, that might reflect Oakland or some other place, but it's not our data. But we did take, Mr. Ledesma, and I saw some snapshots of other, of other data, which I think, at least for me, was enough of us, you know, looking at some of the stop and race data and other things, like, okay, well, we, it's, there's not, we, we don't have an epidemic of, of a problem here, so we can get it, we can take the time to do it right. And we, and, and we are in, in the work that we're doing. This aligns very much with every other one of the priorities that the chief has been implementing over the last couple of years with the department's strong support and, and leadership across, you know, every level and every, every nook and cranny of the department. So it, it matches up very well with that. And I think that, I agree focusing on RIPA as, I mean, it's, it may not be exactly the best, but it is comprehensive, and it's going to be a mandate anyway. It will also potentially open up, you know, state reimbursement for the cost of compliance at some point, as we get farther along, as one, as one source of, as one source of funding for that. The, and I also agree on the analytics. I think, you know, that's, that is, that matters a great deal, and there's a huge amount of power there, that's actually to across the city organization. I mean, we, we are generating and collecting and tabulating more data than we have, wherever have before, and we're reporting a little bit more of it, but we're not really, we don't have an analytics office. And it's, there's not, there's not going to be a point in the next five years where there's going to be a police department analytics officer. And we don't need such a thing. But, you know, citywide, maybe, I mean, with some capacity to be able to do this. But another way to approach that is to move forward with what, the, the open data policy that we've already adopted. And it's risky, in the sense that, you know, you just don't know what people are going to do when you make the data open. But more often than not, they will do the kinds of deeper analytics that Mr. Johansson is talking about, and they'll do analytics that we wouldn't think of. Let me, let me, let me look at streetlights, you know, let me take public works data around streetlight outages and police department data around some traffic stops or something, and, you know, start to really get into phenomenon that, that, that the police department data, you know, Donna would not have access to on her own. Well, she would have access, but she wouldn't be looking at normally. But sort of putting the data out there and, and letting people, you know, look at it, and they will get it wrong, and they will, they will, and it'll cause some problems, but it will also help us get better. And if we have a culture of being open and transparent about that data, we'll also be better at being able to respond when someone, when somebody does get it wrong. So I think... does get it wrong. So I think that that's one way to start to approach the analytics question without thinking about opening an entire shop, is to, is to just keep proceeding along the open data work that the city manager has led, along with, you know, his team and, you know, across the department, across the department directors. And it helps to build trust as well, because the tools and the number of people who can code and all that stuff is changing rapidly, right? So the, I mean, the potential for that to be a way to solve that is helpful as well. Those folks will also develop, you know, to the extent to which this data is available and open, people will develop other useful tools that we're not even thinking about, you know, at Code for Sacramento, or folks like Mr. Johansson who writes stuff like this, could be really helpful as well. Because part of the way to think about, I mean, the resource question is, is real, but, you know, respecting the city manager's gotta put together a budget. I just, I wanna, I don't, I don't want to feel as though this is something we're only gonna do if the city manager has to propose an extra quarter of a million dollars in funding. Because we've done the pavement managements, we've done this, we've done something like this in most of our other departments at one point or another. This is simply now effective 21st century management of any agency, and make choices in that respect. You know, okay, some things are not gonna, we're not gonna do some things that we did before and do this instead. So at least my support for doing this is not necessarily, you know, I'm not adding on a motion to add a certain amount of dollars. I mean, the city manager's gonna have to figure that out in the budget process and bring that, and bring that to the council, because it will cost resources, but it's also a prioritization issue, and then also a state mandate issue and hopefully later, later along down, along down the line. So I think this is, it is an excellent start, and it's clear that the chief and the deputy chief are, you know, are firmly committed to getting this right. This was not a surprise request from us in the first place. It aligns with the work that's already underway in the department. But it really goes a long way, I think, to helping us be able to do our job on behalf of the community and off behalf of the department, to be effective accountability and effective communicators in both directions. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. On the, the data itself, when you're looking at collecting this in the future and kind of some best practices, say, for example, there's an arrest charge, is there a standard category that's, that all cities use? Because one of the things when you start looking at data is you, it becomes incompatible with, like, Sacramento data. So you want to have everything kind of look the same. So like an arrest charge, is it gonna be, you know, there's certain coding, it's like medical records, for example, everything is coded the same way. Is that the kind of...
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
We would be using the penal code. So, and it's, saw with the deadly weapon would be a 245. So it's a common, an accurate across the board.
So the only problem would be, for example, there's a narrative like seizure details. You have to actually see someone keying more into just checking a box, and that, yeah.
That's, yeah. Yeah, that's part of the issue there. It's a matter of, if I may, very quickly, you've all brought up a number of different things. First thing, at the risk of polluting my partner here, I'm sick, so she's speaking on my behalf, so I wanted to thank you very much. It is important, and I want to take this opportunity to spend a minute with, with my bosses, plural. From the day that I started here, city manager and I have been talking about the way in which we're gonna move forward as a police agency. And it's really important that you know what is the drumbeat behind every day at West Sacramento Police Department. And really, it's the thing that I say constantly, and they're kind of tired of hearing it. If what we do is important, and it is, then how we do the job is at least as important as the job, as our, as the job that we do, if that makes sense. And so it is a matter of being effective. Mr. Kristoff, it's exactly right. Our job is to be peace officers. And so that is, that is in large part the standard by which we will be measured. But how we go about that is just as important as being effective as a police agency. That is the key. I appreciate your, I'm thanking you for your appreciation of, this is really a holistic approach to how we address an agency. Data collection is one source of information. I agree with this discussion that the analytics are pretty much everything, how we look at that. CompStat is something that you're all aware, that I'm a keen fan on. Basically, it gives us the guidance on how we should do our job and be most effective about how we do it. But my, my crime analysts will tell you that we spend oodles of time peering, peeling through all this data to try to really understand what it is that we're looking at. So that's gonna be a key point. But mostly, what I'd like to emphasize here is, number one, we are committed to being the best that we can possibly be, and entirely transparent. If someone has a better idea, I'm more than happy to steal it and give all credit due. But the reality of it is, is that in this particular capacity, in this particular situation, we are on that cutting edge, if you will, in looking at data collection and the analytics, and how that might be, you know, really analyzed, and what can we, what can we garner from that. But lastly, I just want to reiterate one other piece. From the moment we hire someone, the policies and procedures by which they are trained, the training that we do, our outreach to the community, the list goes on and on and on. And so what I'm trying to do as your chief, as your, the number one peace officer in the city of West Sacramento, is to provide a holistic approach to how we do policing here in the best traditions of West Sacramento. And they're, our goal of being, you know, partners with the community that we serve. Anyway, I also want to thank Mr. Tuttle here, because without his ear and without his guidance, we would be kind of muffled. So I appreciate it, sir.
All right, thank you. The data piece, I just want, just to pile on the, it really is important, because even the questions like, so we've asked to have data by race, but you're not blood testing people for, so, you know, the protocols by which you, are you asking somebody? Is it visual? I mean, these are, these, and does one department do it one way or another? Another? Does one officer do it? These things are messier than they, than they sound, than they can appear. And other departments looking at lots of different, you know, technologies for sensing and that sort of thing. And we have other things besides the police department and other cameras in the city for that sort of thing. When I was at South by Southwest, Alphabet, the parent company for Google, is, I think I mentioned this before, is working on essentially converting or Android cameras into the equivalent of police body cameras. Not Axon, the, there is an Android camera application right now that has police, police body camera functionality. But actually, the converting, using the basics of an Android smartphone, which is about a, about a third of, a third or a quarter of the cost of a typical police body camera, but also has the, all the technology in it to send one officer's down and a variety of, and can be, it can do a lot more things than today's body cameras are, can do. So we're gonna reach out to them, so they're looking for a city that they, a small enough city that they might want to make, you know, donate their prototypes to, you know, to look, to try to find ways to be at the leading edge without spending a ton of money doing it or taking a lot of unnecessary risks. So, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to the council calendar.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Here are some dates that might be of interest to you. On April 25th, that's a Monday, the River City Regional Stadium Financing Authority meeting was canceled.
What was canceled?
The Stadium Financing Authority.
Okay. Yes. And the city council, city county two by two on April 27th was also canceled. But that leaves everyone free to go to the Yolo Leaders Meeting, which we're hosting on April 27th at 4:00 p.m. in the Galleria.
Nice try.
And then coming up in May, on May 5th, the U.S. Trade Representative will be here at 11:00 a.m. in the Galleria. And then on May 12th, we have the State of the City in the Galleria.
State of the City, April 5th?
No, May 5th is the, is the trade, you're gonna talk about that, Mr. Tuttle?
Or you can, yeah.
No, no, please, Mr. Kristoff was just asking about the date. So, any question on the, question on the calendar? If not, I think Mr. Tuttle's gonna cover that in particular and then the city manager report.
Okay. Before I jump to that, while they're still here, I just want to add on a couple kudos to our police department. Chief McDonald definitely buys into this notion of better data, better decisions. And CompStat has been a big, big part of the turnaround of the department. And Elaine Carlton, the blonde over there, has done a wonderful job leading that effort. And Donna Rosner as well was great to work with. And what I think is important under both the leadership of Chief McDonald and Chief Stevens is the work with other departments as well as with the community. They had the coffee with a cop this morning at Carol's. Our police officers are really engaged with the community. So as we share this, the crime statistics, you know, we can point to different things, but I just think this contact that PD has with the community is making a huge difference in numbers. So I appreciate them sticking around. They normally don't stick around for my report. But Deanna did a wonderful job speaking as well, despite her comments. On, on May 5th, the mayor has arranged for the Council to the U.S. Trade Rep's Office, Luis Jimenez, to come to City Hall to talk about global food trade. I don't know if you want to add more to that, but staff is racing ahead on this. You'll get an invitation tomorrow. We're anticipating somewhere between 100 and 150 representatives of the food and ag companies in West Sacramento and the region to be there. I don't know, Mayor, you want to add any more to that?
Well, just to, you know, to really underscore the invitation, because we are, we're trying to, I mean, this is a, this is a high-ranking federal official that's coming, and we want to underscore the, subtly, but underscore the role of, that West Sacramento is playing and can play, but as part of the region. So the invitation's being issued regionally, and it is a regional event that we're hosting. But we're confident that the content will appropriately highlight the opportunities here for production, manufacturing, processing, sensing, logistics, the whole, the whole scope. So it should be, I mean, it's an important event to try to advance our economic strategy in that sector.
I agree. And that's from 11 to 1. It is Cinco de Mayo, so Shondo's Tacos will make their debut in West Sacramento with catering that event. Also, May is Bike Month. Councilmember Ledesma's asked a couple of times about our event. Staff is working on the specific events as it relates to our city. We should have that out in the next couple of days. We're gonna be aggressive in terms of getting staff to sign up and bike as many miles as possible. And the cap, the cap traffic, definitely appreciate Councilmember Sandin, along with John Robinson and Greg Fabian representing us very well.
All right, and question on the city manager report. City attorney report. Staff direction from members of the council. We have no future agenda item requests or motion to adjourn?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to adjourn, but I just want to do so, if you don't mind, in memory of the victims of the horrible car crash that was in our community last week. I think we all saw our community grieve and then come together around the victims, both Stephanie Finnegan and Lloyd Tinsley, as well as those who were injured. So I do want to make a motion to close tonight's meeting in memorial of them. But before I do so, I also want to thank all the police officers here, thank our first responders, both the police department and the fire department. Some of the stories I heard post-crash, those people are affected too by what happens. And those are neighbors and friends and kids' friends that are affected. So I want to thank them for their diligence and their compassion for that. So I'd like to make the motion in their memory. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none, motion carries, and he's adjourned in their honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.